Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman, Consilla?
Here.
Alderman, Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman, Duco?
Here.
Alderman, Pousa?
Here.
Alderman, Randall?
Here.
Alderman, Ferguson?
Here.
Oh, that way I can listen to what they say.
Can you please-
I like to hear what they say.
Sure.
Can you please mute your phones? Alderman, Anthony?
Here.
Alderman, Ovian?
Here.
Alderman, Dittelman?
Here.
Alderwoman, Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman, Steele?
Here.
Alderman, Rothweiler? Alderman, Rothweiler?
I'm here.
Alderman, Elmore?
Here.
Alderman, Wygant?
Here.
Alderman, Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman, Barfield?
Here.
Alderman, Rothweiler?
Here.
Thank you. All are present, Mayor.
They're all pre- okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please call roll of the department heads, please.
City Treasurer, Hart?
Fire District, this is your one test page, test page, only time I was like-
City Attorney, Horner? Police Chief is out, Lieutenant Colonel, Iskand?
Here.
Fire Chief, Tom Poor? Fire Chief, Tom Poor?
I'm here.
Oh, thank you. Finance Director, Jamie Maitre?
Here.
Director of Maintenance, Ken Wong?
Here.
Director of Public Works, Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Waste Water, Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Residential Commercial Development, Anissa McCaskill?
Here.
Director of Library, Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT, Scott Markovich? City Engineer, Michael Belloff?
Here.
Human Resources Manager, Emma Qualls?
Here.
So, Mayor, everybody's here but the police chief, but Lieutenant Colonel, Iskand's here.
Right, and I knew that, so he's excused. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, from where you're at, if you'd please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag.
-to the flag of the United States of America- -and to the Republic for which it stands- -one nation, dear God-
indivisible-
indivis- -with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that's difficult with all the phone lag time there. We have no public hearing this evening. I'd like to open public participation. Please keep it to the agenda or to something that's Volvo-related. Please, when I ask now, say your name and I'll call on you one at a time if we have more than one. Public participation is now open.
Hi, this is Renee.
Okay, Renee, and this is Renee Eichels.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to ask a couple questions. This is about next weekend. I know it's St. Patrick's Day, but we already have a scheduled event started for next Saturday with our third year anniversary and we're kicking off a benefit for Songs for Soldiers and we start on St. Patrick's Day. We are a little concerned about the turnout. I've talked to several of the other restaurants and bars and we're all working to try to keep things, you know, spaced, people counted in our restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. But if there is a large turnout, there's not very much food to choose from. Our kitchen's down for a while. Some of the other restaurants are not serving food and I just reached out to a few of the restaurants and there's some interest in being able to have a food truck or two downtown so that if people are out and about, that they have enough food to eat if they've been out drinking. So, we just kinda were hoping that we could get something approved so we could try to schedule some food trucks if possible.
There's a procedure, and a city clerk might want to go into that. I mean, it would have to be, Jenny, a designated festival for the city council, something of that type, right, to have food trucks downtown?
Correct. They have to go through the event, the communications, and get it approved by council.
Yeah, I mean, at this late of the day- Yes, ma'am?
I understand that. I had asked a couple weeks ago, just chose not to proceed with that, thinking I was the only one. Then our kitchen went out. Now, as it is getting closer, just kinda concerned about the safety of others with not having enough food and the other restaurants being overwhelmed. I would fill out the applications and whatever is necessary, and we are running out of time, but was hoping that we could get some kind of approval tonight to move forward with that, but if we can't, we can't.
If it's not on the agenda, we can't take action. That prohibits us by the Open Meetings Act. We have to advertise any action the city council's gonna take forty-eight hours before the meeting. So, the fact that that's not on the agenda tonight, there's no way we could legitimately- And I think with the food trucks, we have a procedure and an ordinance in place that this council several years ago approved, and I think we'd have to follow that procedure because there was a time years ago when the downtown merchants were the vendors, the various types of vendors on the sidewalks and that, and the food trucks. They, we worked this out over time, but they were not, you know, for that kind of competition. I understand. We hope that everybody's successful, but we hope that, like you said, we certainly hope that they stay spaced and that they stay wearing their mask as much as possible because this COVID is not still, it's not gone, and I can speak personally for that this past week. It's a miserable, miserable virus. So, I don't know. Is there anybody else on the line to speak to this, to speak to this particular item?
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
Alderman, Wiggington. And I, you know, I know, I get what she's saying, and I'm sure of it, it's illegal, and yes, thank you, you did state your point very well that a couple years ago, we came up with a pretty strong ordinance to protect our restaurants from food trucks. My question is, for St. Patrick's Day, are the crowds going to be controlled? Are we going to have an increased police presence so that we don't end up with five thousand people on East Main? Number one, what is our procedure going to be? And if the restaurants, and of course, we don't know what the weather, you know, St. Patrick's Day can be beautiful or horrible. Now, the restaurants can have certainly seating insides of a particular amount, but if the weather is decent, they still have their outdoor seating available because we have not opened those streets yet, so I would sure take advantage. Instead of giving the money to the food trucks, I'd take advantage of your outdoor seating and make your own money, not give it to somebody else. And then, really, I really do wanna know, how are we going to control this event?
We are not having, we are not recognizing, there's no St. Patrick's Day parade and there's no official St. Patrick's Day celebration downtown. The streets will not be closed off other than what already are, and if we get such crowds and if such crowds become to the point that we don't, you know, because when we have special events, then we have to have police down there. The chief and I and Assistant Chief, Iskand, are always very cognizant of St. Patrick's Day, and we have been for many, 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 many years. But we have nothing special planned this year, right, Jenny, at this time?
Correct. There are no events that have been approved.
There's no, there's no events that have been approved, and if we get, if we get that type of, you know, oversized crowd, then I'm already very concerned about the social distancing and what we're, what we may be getting ourselves into far as a party atmosphere that might put us in the negative spotlight that we don't wanna be in. I want, I want the restaurants to get back to capacity and to get, to get back on their feet, but we certainly have to, we cannot ignore and we cannot act like this didn't happen, and if people get out in the street, we're not gonna tolerate that because this is not a planned festival where they're going to have to be on the sidewalk, in the bump outs, or in the designated streets that we've closed, and that's what we're gonna have to do. I know there was some talk about possibly having this event maybe later on in the fall when the, when the amount of crowds opens up, and we certainly, you know, are open for that. But I think we gotta be real careful how much this gets away from us because we can't, we're not planning to handle it. We don't have, we don't have the manpower to handle it right now, and we don't have streets closed off planning, and we don't have, we don't wanna take a chance with social distancing. I mean, not paying attention to that and taking it seriously. So, that's, Jenny, you have anything else you wanna add? You do the bets for me, for us.
I mean, the thing is, is at the end of the day, there are still COVID mitigation factors involved here, so the city cannot approve anything.
Exactly. No, we cannot, we're not, we're not, we're not even eligible to approve anything other than the fact that the restaurants are allowed to be open at what the IDPH has, you know, told us they can be open for the capacities and the social distancing requirements that they have to still follow, so we have to be careful.
Very, Alderman, Wiggington again, so really, with the mitigations still in place and with the restaurants working at a certain percentage and their outdoor dining, and if we follow the rules, really, the restaurants should be able to handle because what the point you're trying to get across, it's not gonna be like it was in the past, the old St. Patrick's Day. That's not gonna happen. So, I don't, I don't think that the people would have as shortage of food because we're gonna control the crowd. I don't think the restaurants are gonna run out of food if they plan correctly, but I would sure take advantage of those street closures, the space you got around your restaurants, and we all, it's just a fact of the matter is, the rules are gonna have to be followed, and we just can't let it get out of hand.
Mayor, can I have my two minutes? Is that possible? I know you don't like open questions. This is Alderman, Elmore.
Yeah.
And I agree with you a hundred percent that we wanna keep things safe with the COVID mitigations. I'm not sure if we have some blinders on here or not, but folks make no mistake about it, they're coming whether we want them to or not. And I don't mean to be smart aleck about it. Last year, we were under the start of COVID, and you wouldn't have known that there wasn't a parade down there. And I'm just saying that it's different this year. So, Alderman, Wiggington, I don't know if you're aware of, or if anybody's aware, that Big Daddy's, that normally serves food, is not serving food. Copper Fire, that normally serves food, is not serving food. Then you go to Tavern on Main, of course, they're serving food, they do an awesome job, they can handle big crowds, and then Argaritas will be serving food. Seven's will be serving food. Bennys will be in transition. So, three restaurants that we normally have are not going to be serving food. And I think what I heard from the owner of Copper Fire was that they're concerned about safety with people, that we can say all we want that there are no St. Patrick's Day celebrations downtown, we can say that till we're blue in the face. Let's be realistic here, folks. I mean, they're coming. They're coming.
And Alderman, Elmore, that's why I asked the mayor, what are our plans, what kind of proactive plan have we got before this thing ever cracks open on the seventeenth or whatever day, St. Patrick's, whatever that Saturday is?
Well, if the restaurants, the people who, the people that make a living-
How are we gonna be proactive?
If the restaurants that make a living, who make their day-to-day grind on food sales, all of a sudden, in some instances like Copper Fires and somewhat emergency situations, are not serving food, then we've got a situation. And people aren't gonna say, oh, you know what, I'm not going downtown because Copper Fire's not serving food. They're still coming. And I'm just saying that this is not a crazy, unreasonable solution, idea. It's just something, and I don't know if executive order is in place or not. We put executive orders out all the time from the mayor's office when he has, he has the responsibility and the duty to do what he thinks is best, and that's his call. And I support that, whatever he does.
So, you say to allow the food trucks, to allow the food trucks bring more people down?
We have, no, we have-
I don't want, I don't want the food trucks out there to bring more food, more people down. I mean, but if the food trucks aren't there, then you've got more people down there with no food.
Well, if you bring food trucks, it becomes a warmer party. It's not a party. The restaurants are open. It's not your typical St. Patrick's Day. There's no parade. There's no closed-off streets other than what we have for the outside dining that we've been going along with the past year. And we cannot be a part of acting like it's gonna be okay or we should expect it because we're gonna end up being City of Volvo, the first event in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. We're gonna be on the news for the wrong reasons. And I can tell you, folks, I'm just telling you firsthand, I experienced this week, you don't want this stuff, and it's horrible. And so, we cannot, we cannot be a part of creating a party-like atmosphere because we are not allowed to at this time. It is prohibited. Garrett, would you agree with that explanation?
It's a decision of the council under the ordinance, so it'd be something that the ordinance would have to consider, but you are bound by the mitigations that are in place already.
Yeah. And I don't disagree with what you're saying. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, first, there's a safety factor out there too of people coming whether we want them to or not. Now, I expect every restaurant to be fully under compliance with the number of people that they are allowed by the county health department regulations and the state and the city, and I fully expect, this does not give them some kind of free rein to do whatever they want. At the same time, I just hate to see people down there doing what they do on St. Patrick's Day. And the restaurants have said, through Renee, they can't handle this kind of food call when there's three restaurants that, for whatever reason, ironically, just, it's a weird triangulation storm of food being out, and he's in transition. Big Daddy's under construction. Copper Fire having an emergency situation. Boom, three restaurants of six that are out.
Well, I believe that Bennys is going to be moving up, because I talked to him today. He's, he's going to transfer the final things over, I think, in Springfield tomorrow, and he's planning to be open. And you have Casa Maria around the corner, and we have some other restaurants down on West Main, Sandwich Shop, Federo, and I just think that the-
Papa Vitos, yeah.
Papa Vitos is right there, half a block off of Main, off of Main, and I think that they will all, but I mean, we have to, we cannot, we cannot organize this in such a way and look the other way because we'll be, we'll be creating a party-like atmosphere, and we cannot have thousands of people downtown. And if they come, the stores are gonna have to limit their, they're gonna have to limit their capacity, or we're gonna have a problem. We do have, if the weather's decent, we'll have a lot more room in the outside designated areas.
And you know, excuse me, but if you bring in food trucks, you're saying, come on down, we're creating a party atmosphere, so you're just being-
You're gonna have to close up.
Lieutenant Colonel, Iskand, Lieutenant Colonel, Iskand, can I ask you, have you been working with the mayor and the chief to devise any kind of a proactive plan
to be ready for what Alderman, Elmore, is thinking could be a massive amount of people?
We're, no, we're gonna have a few extra people as we always do years ago before we created the party-like atmosphere downtown. But this is not a designated, we're not scheduling all the extra manpower because, first of all, we don't have the money, and second of all, it's not in the plan that we're gonna schedule, you know, police officers to, so that we can close the streets off suddenly because these large amounts of crowds show up. We're gonna hopefully be back out of COVID restrictions by fall where we can have some of our festivals and we can get back to normal. But March seventh, this coming weekend, what is it, the thirteenth or whatever it is, we're not gonna be ready yet, and COVID restrictions and mitigation rules are not gonna be lifted in such a way that we can operate like nothing's happened. We cannot do that. We're gonna be kidding ourselves, and we're gonna get a lot more people sick, and we're gonna end up being a super-spreader event, and I don't want no part of that because I don't want anybody to feel, feel the misery of this. This is horrible. So, I would, I would just say that if it wasn't on the agenda tonight, otherwise, we could vote on it, but, you know, the chief and I and Iskand, we'll talk, we'll talk tomorrow. And we'll get together and we'll have a conference call, okay? So, anything, anybody else in public participation? Anybody else in public participation? Hearing no other public participation, I'm gonna close public participation, and we're gonna move to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And all we have tonight is still very important. It's the character word of the month, and the character word of the month is perseverance. Staying with the task and not giving up, and I think perseverance is what all of our businesses have been doing the past year, and I feel terrible for them. I really do. And we're gonna turn this corner, and I think we are, but we still have to make sure we use the safety, the safety, you know, all the protocol or we're gonna, or we're gonna regret it. At this time, we're moving on to number eight, approval of the minutes. At this time, I'd ask for someone if they're willing to make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of February sixteen, two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Ferguson.
Schaefer? Schaefer, Alderman-
Ferguson, second by Schaefer. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
I'm not gonna take- Motion- At this time, we go to claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the disbursements in the amount of one million, fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four and twenty-six cents. Do I hear a motion?
Steele.
Who was the second? Duco. Steele and Duco. We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any questions or comments about the payroll and the claims and disbursements? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore? 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 Wygant?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was that Wygant or was that Elmore?
Wygant.
Okay, thank you. Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
All right, I gotta drop.
Okay. We move on to reports. I'd ask for a motion to approve and accept and file the city attorney's report dated February twenty-sixth, nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Schaefer?
Schaefer and Dittelman, motion and second for the church to accept and file the city attorney's report. Any discussion on the city attorney's report? Hearing none, roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Motion carries, thank you. We go on now to oral reports, eleven A one. We have a motion from administration to approve the purchase of nine Surface Pro X tablet computers and complimentary accessories for the RCDS staff in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents as budgeted from Connection Public Sector Solutions. As you remember, this has been in the budget, and we've been working on this, but with the change of building commissioners and a few other issues moving on this past year, it slowed down more than we wanted, but we'd like to get a motion now and move forward with this. Is there a motion? Hazel, Hazel, Hazel made the motion, who's the second? Schaefer made the second. We have Hazel and Schaefer to approve the motion coming on eleven A one. Is there any further questions?
Yes, Mayor, I'm-
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanna know if the computers at housing will go ahead and, and purchase is compatible with the police department's computers in the field as well as fire department.
This is Anissa, and we also have our IT director present. The purpose of purchasing these computers is so that we have field technology and have that compatibility with the police as well as with the fire department. So, that is the purpose of purchasing these, is to allow us to have the field technology. Thank you.
Answer your question, okay? Yes.
Mayor, this is Alderman Ferguson. I also have a question. Anissa or for Scott, once we make the purchase of these, when will they be deployed?
Here comes Scott, one second.
So, the short answer is projecting within the next, say, sixty to ninety days would be the goal, depending on the training rate for the inspectors. So, we still are finalizing functionality of the Omnigo software for code enforcement slash inspection tool, but we do have to get the entire staff trained, and that includes the secretaries at the front office and all of the inspectors in the field. We will not be able to do group trainings with them because of their current work schedule, so it'll have to be one at a time. So, the goal would be to have them deployed within the next sixty, ninety days. They will actually physically be on their desks for them to use, probably within thirty days of us receiving them, but as far as deploying the actual Omnigo software for use of inspection, it's gonna take a little bit longer.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, and anybody have any other questions that haven't been addressed for eleven A one? Roll call.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington? Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. We move now to eleven A two. I'd ask for a motion to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Belleville and the Rowdies Rugby Club, a division of the United States of American Rugby Football Union, for the use of Daisy Park, seven fifty West Eighth Street, Belleville, Illinois, March first, two thousand twenty-one through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, for the annual sum of five hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Ferguson.
Elmore.
Ferguson and Elmore. Do I hear any questions about this, uh, this request coming from, that was given to us this past week? Roll call.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we have, uh, the, several, quite a few, uh, communications. Is there any problem with having the clerk reading them together?
Please.
Please, dear. Okay, all right. Jenny, if you don't mind, you'll read them together?
Twelve A, Divas Night Out, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Main Street to hold Divas Night Out, third Thursday of every month, July through December, twenty twenty-one. Five PM to eight PM, street closure request, first block of North Church from East Main to the alley. Use of gas light park, electricity for music, trash toters, no parking signs, and barricades as requested on Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, four PM to nine PM. All events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve B, Bellevue Museum Open House Day, six five, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Historical Society, Saint Clair County Historical Society, Labor and Industry Museum, Gustav Kerner House Committee, and Bellevue Historical Preservation Committee to hold a Bellevue Museum, open house day, Saturday, June fifth, twenty twenty-one, ten AM to two PM. No street closures or city services requested. All events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve C, Cajun Blues Fest, six twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Cancellation date of eight fourteen, twenty twenty-one. Request from Ainai Temple and Crehan's Irish Pub to hold the Cajun Blues Fest, Saturday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Cancellation date of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, twelve PM to six PM. City services requested, trash toters and picnic tables, all events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve D, Craft Beer Walk, nine eleven, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Main Street to hold the Craft Beer Walk, Saturday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, three PM to eight PM. No street closures or city services requested. All events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve E, Bellevue Main Street Marathon, nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Main Street Marathon to hold the Bellevue Main Street Marathon, Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Seven AM to two PM, street closure request, West Main Street from Illinois Street to Second Street, four AM to three PM. City services requested, trash toters, police and public works personnel, picnic tables, electric, no parking signs and cones. All events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve F, Torre de Belleville, ten sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Parks and Recreation Department to hold the Torre de Belleville, Saturday, Ox- October sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Nine AM to three PM, Union United Methodist Church using designated route, street closure request, eight thirty AM to eleven AM, intersection of East B Street and North Douglas, and one block north, south, east, and west from intersection with rolling closures along route. Additional city services requested, barricade, no parking signs, trash toters, picnic tables, and police and public works personnel. Placement of banner across East Main Street and West Main Street, and all events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve G, Art and Wine Walk, eleven six, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Main Street to hold the Art and Wine Walk, Saturday, November sixth, twenty twenty-one. Three PM to seven PM, no street closures or city services requested. All events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event. Twelve H, Cookie Day Walk, twelve eleven, twenty twenty-one. Request from Bellevue Main Street to hold Cookie Day Walk, Saturday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Nine AM to three, that's, sorry, that should be three PM. Three PM, no street closures requested, requesting use of City Hall for the barber shoppers, three AM to eleven AM. All events to follow current state of Illinois regulations, mitigations related to COVID nineteen at time of event.
Do I hear a motion to approve all these communications?
Rothweiler moves.
Duco, Rothweiler. Duco was the second?
Yes.
We have a, a motion second to approve twelve A through twelve E uh, as they, as just read by the city clerk. If there's no further questions, I call for a roll call vote.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman? Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Aye.
Rothweiler? I'm sorry, Rothweiler?
Aye.
Thank you. Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, we move on now. There's no petitions. Resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolution thirty-four oh four. Do I hear a motion?
Shaffer?
Wygon.
Duco?
Wygon. Shaffer and Wygon, to read by title only, resolution thirty-four oh four. If there's no further questions, I'd call for a roll call vote on that.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution thirty-four oh four.
Can I read it first?
Shaffer. Anthony. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Gotta read it by title first. It's only two sentences, but yes, ma'am.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-four oh four, a resolution of support for the City of Belleville program year twenty twenty-one, application for community development by grant funding.
Thank you. Do we now have a motion to approve thirty-four oh four? Anthony. Anthony, who's the second?
Ferguson.
Shaffer?
Ferguson. Anthony and Ferguson on, on, uh, fourteen A. Any questions about the resolution that was just read, the title? Hearing none, roll call under resolution.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Motion carries, thank you. Ardent says we have none, unfinished business. I don't know of any. Jenny, do you know of any?
No, sir.
Complete. Okay.
Mayor, mayor.
This, this is Alderman. Hold it, hold it. Remember before Ovian spoke up, who was on there first?
Uh, Alderman Wiggington.
Okay, you're first on Ovian.
Okay, if you'd be so kind, I, I just think of, I'm, I'm thinking more about the Saint Patrick's thing, and, you know, whether there's a parade or not, if it's a beautiful day, people are used to coming into downtown areas. And kinda like the way, if you build it, they will come. We have, we have a, 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 a nice downtown area with bars and restaurants. Um, and even if we don't have a promis- parade and folk, don't promote it, people are, are gonna wanna get outside. They're gonna wanna congregate. And I know you're saying that we're not gonna use extra, uh, police, uh, uh, to man the streets. But I, I still, I, I think Alderman Ovian was right. I, I think that if it's a nice day, uh, people, they, they don't care, you know, they're used to getting out, drinking, having a good time, celebrating, and people have been so cooped up. And I would encourage you and the police department to come up with some type of pro- preliminary plan if we run into a situation where we see this, you know, and, and I think people are more concerned about how much they have to drink than they have much uh, to eat. And I, I would like you to sit down with the, uh, the police chief and assistant chief and, and advise the consul of what we could expect if there is a large crowd that shows up. And I think the consul needs to know, and I think, I don't think we can be naive about this, that there could be a lot of people, because it's been a long cold winter. If it's nice, guess what? They're gonna wanna be outside, and we've gotta be ready.
I understand. Okay, I understand. And I can tell you, for sixteen years now, I have worked with the police department and making sure, way before we ever had the downtown streetscape and most of these restaurants, way before they were ever in business, we always made extra plans and were, were concerned about Saint Patrick's Day. It is a holiday where people love to, uh, have a few, uh, few drinks and, and have fellowship. We will talk about it, but I wanna also just, just say, I don't want to walk away from this meeting tonight giving the wrong impression that we're gearing up for a projected big party, because if we do that, that's what we're gonna have. And, and we are still under COVID restrictions, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't, once again, I don't wanna see people sick. I don't wanna see our restaurants and our numbers go the wrong way, that all of a sudden we're back shut down again. We, we, we've got to embrace the, the, the positivity of what we're, what we're bringing, but we've gotta use it with some good judgment. And, and we are not having a parade. We are not opening the gates, the floodgates for everybody from everywhere to come downtown. They're gonna have to do it in such a way that, that meets the criteria of COVID mitigation, and we're gonna have to use some sense. Because if not, we're gonna have a mess in more ways than one. I don't like to say that, but it's just a fact. To say that we might as well just prepare for it and then act like we're gearing up, um, it's just, the police chief and I and the assistant police chief, we will talk about it like we do every year before the plans, uh, stop, but we'll go back like to the old years. But I just wanna caution, all, and I will send a memo out to every business in town, every liquor license, that they're going to have to use good judgment, and they're going to have to follow the COVID mitigation uh, that we're under from IDPH. Otherwise, they could be, we could all be in trouble, and worse than that, a lot more people could be very sick. So, we'll, we will, we will talk about it, and, and that's what we'll do. But I just don't wanna leave the wrong impression that we're encouraging a big party situation, uh, this year at this time. Hopefully, we'll be back in the fall where we can have a lot of party situations, and then we'll be prepared for them. Okay, anything else under miscellaneous or, or Alderman Ovian, you were next?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I would like to go ahead and indicate something here tonight from a safety standpoint. And I would like to make sure that my statement is not being interrupted tonight, so I can go ahead and, and get it finished. Uh, Benny's Pizza and Pub was inspected by Dave Zahn, deputy district, deputy chief, to determine the square footage for the number of patrons who can be seated in his new restaurant formerly known as Benar Bread. Uh, Deputy, uh, Chief Von measured the front area, which no longer had booths and was replaced with tables, and came out to a capacity load of seventy-three. When the deputy chief, Zahn, measured the back part, which has a lesser number, the restaurant, uh, came up with a total number of eleven. So now we have for the, at one fourteen, East Main Street, we have a total capacity load of eighty-four. He can handle as many as nine-nine without exceeding his goal of not having to put in a sprinkler system. If Benny were to use the loft, the loft area on the second floor, he would then have to put in a sprinkler system in the restaurant. At one sixteen East Main Street, which has a separate area and has a firewall, this permits limited seating in that area and separate and apart from one fourteen. At last Thursday's meeting of the zoning board, we were discussing the sign approval for one fourteen and one sixteen East Main Street. I was the only alderman who attended. I mentioned to the Director of Economic Development that I wanted clarification on the issue dealing with the occupancy permit. I was concerned from a safety standpoint, but not wanting to make trouble. I was hoping that the director would allow me to say what my concern was, and she then could respond by saying, "You can call me tomorrow, and I shall have an answer for you." However, that was not to be. Director Nissa said we have already approved the occupancy permit. I don't disagree with that. And Benny will be open for business the week of March the first. However, Director McCaskill said this to me in a sarcastic inappropriate manner, which I did not like. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not commenting any further at this time. Is there anybody else under miscellaneous or new business? I'd ask for a motion to approve the motor fuel claims in the, I'm sorry, this is, yes.
This is Alderman Consilla.
Yes.
Uh, my comment is that if someone has, uh, an issue to be raised about, uh, an employee, that this is the inappropriate place to do it, you go to that employee's direct, uh, direct.
Supervisor.
You do not do it over in a, in an open meeting. So it's totally inappropriate to do that today. And, uh, I wanna apologize that such a thing is happening, because we have to remember, these people are our employees. They have rights, and you cannot trample on somebody's rights.
Well, I would agree, and I appreciate you standing up for our employees, because this is the first I've heard of it, and the appropriate thing, as much as you do call me, uh, Alderman Ovian, you should call me. I'm, I'm their boss. So let's move on to miscellaneous and new business. We have a motor fuel claims in the amount of forty-one thousand seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Do I hear a motion?
Steele?
Steele, who's the second? Wygon. Uh, we have a motion by Steele, second by Wygon for the motor fuel claims. If there's no questions about the amount of claims, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. This time, I'd ask for a, um, motion, uh, girl. Rothweiler moves.
Shaffer, who's the second?
I hear a second. Rothweiler and Shaffer, I hear a roll call.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?